The notion of really finding out what all of our stakeholders think the mission of the school district is. And that it not, you know, it has to be embedded, but it also has to be something that all of our stakeholders are interested in. And we need to ask them and to be listeners to what their vision is and what the mission of the schools are. I keep thinking of that podcast on and and not having five trustees and a superintendent come up with this, that we need to be listening to wide variety of stakeholders about what their vision is of what our school system should be doing and what our goals should be. So it's, it's always a long and cumbersome process to do that. But I think it's really critical and I, I really like the idea of having a working group with representatives from the different stakeholder groups working on that.
Well, and I would add to that Judy, that you know, we've had all that work done on the portrait of a graduate. And I think we need to be able to incorporate some of that hard work that's already been done. That was very broad. And now I know it was outside our district. It wasn't just Hillsburg. So we're definitely special in our district and I understand that too. So I would say maybe using some of the, the conversation that we've already had around the portrait of a, of a graduate and using that maybe as a little bit of framework to start with, rather than this open ended, what does everybody and anybody want to see?
Right.
Absolutely. But I think that you could use that as a frame in a stakeholder group. But I would really like to hear, I would really like to hear what different members of our stakeholder groups have to say about that portrait of a graduate. And, and does that align with what they're thinking as, or does it open up their thinking to something?
And we did that last year in the town hall and we went over
well, so
yeah. So we have a little bit of that. I think more work to be done for sure. But yeah.
Yeah. Well, because I, I really agree with what Donna and Jamie are both saying, which is that I don't want Rosa's letter to us to be a checklist of, oh, we did that. Oh, we did that. Oh, we did that. Needs to be embedded in just the way we're thinking and changing the position of how we're thinking about. I don't see how we can come up with a vision statement and a mission for the school district without with us imposing that. I think it has to come from our stakeholders.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So
I think we don't want to lose the, the focus that Rosa proposed, which is basically on racism, anti-racism, et cetera. What, how does that, what, going back to the vision, what would that look like? And I totally agree with all three of you is we need to have input. We need to gather that information, but information from our stakeholders, our teachers, students, families, community. What would our school look like? What should our school look like? What will our school look like? When it is an anti-racist system, when we look at all the policies, the practices, et cetera, and adjust those so that we are no longer racist, but we are anti-racist.
And I think I have Yes, agreed. I totally agree with you, Mike. I think I have a little bit of a different perspective in that I agree to make it happen, to flesh it out. I think we need to hear from our stakeholders. Again, I'll use that word, the, the people in our district, those that are going to be receiving and implementing that kind of instruction. I think we definitely need to hear from them. But part of me feels like to set the vision and to set the mission, I don't know if, I don't know if that necessarily has to come first. I mean, I think we can, I almost think we can set a bit of a vision and, and set a bit of a mission before, before having everybody weigh in on what that's going to look like. I think they weigh in on what that's going to look like more so than they weigh in on what is the overall vision. Possibly.
I'm, I'm confused. What, what looks like?
Implementing. The vision of the district is, or what the mission of the district is. I'm not, I'm not so sure that everybody has to weigh in on what the mission is. I think they may want to, I think they need to weigh in on how are we going to live that out?
I agree.
But I don't, I mean, our vision and our mission is a pretty general statement. I mean, I'm not so sure that it
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not so sure. I'm not so sure that it has to be a, a community collective to develop the mission or the vision. But I definitely think it has to be a community collective to know what that's going to look like for the, for the children, for the teachers, the results on our community. So I, I'm not so sure that the board can't do some of the work to actually put together a vision and a mission statement ahead of time.
It is the difference between the what and the how, right?
Yeah.
Board's role is to give us the what, and definitely the community has a role in that. I'm not saying they don't and we should hear from stakeholders. But the how is where the implementation and that's where we need to drum up more support on how we accomplish those things.
I don't think that what I'm talking about is the how. I think what I was talking about is the what.
Right.
It comes out of that podcast that
You need to listen to the podcast.
You do.
I will.
All of us should be listening to that. There's Erin nodding her head because because our vision and our mission in this school district cannot come from four white people
Right.
and one Latina on our school board. This is a majority Latino school district. It needs to be coming from who our stakeholders are. Your job, Erin's job, Chris's job, your staff's job is the how part of that. But the what has to come. And it has to, I really, I really don't, I really think that what our vision is comes from a position of privilege. And we need to have a vision that's coming from the people who are severely impacted by this. And I don't know if that's real clear, but it's real clear to me that we need to move ourselves forward in really getting rid of that white privilege. We all know how to advocate. We all know how to do that. We do that all the time. And we impose that. And I think that we need to, I think we need to not do that. And I look back on our school board meetings when the equity was coming up. And the people who really moved me on that whole discussion were our Latino parents who spoke.
Right.
Not our white liberal parents. It was our Latino parents and their stories that moved me. Because they're the ones that it has an impact on. We are a majority Latino school district. You could see it on the, the poster of all our graduates down at Rec Park. You could see it when you walk into our classrooms. And that's a wonderful, wonderful, rich thing. So that's
And that's
my five cents worth.
I want to take it back to when Jamie started, you know, do you bring this back to staff who asked to implement it? And the question she kind of posed was, what we do to an extent that Acosta Group that we're looking, looking to work with is premised on the work of Paulo Freire. If you know Paulo Freire, you know about consciousness raising. So he, he was an educator in Brazil and really had a heart for working. He wrote his famous book is Pedagogy of the Oppressed, right? So he had a heart for working for the quote oppressed. And his whole premise was to instill the tools in people who have been oppressed historically so that they could critically analyze their context and change it, right? And that is what they're going to help us do. And I think that's what I'm hearing Judy suggest is, is that we give our Latino parents and our Latino stakeholders a bigger seat at the table, right? And we stop projecting ourselves into the conversation. And that's exactly where I think we need to go. I think it needs to start with a vision and mission and a policy on equity. That's something that a number of districts have been working on. So we can work towards that end. And then maybe even do a board workshop around equity, right? Where we really look at ourselves and how we're applying that lens and then create a policy coming out of that. But after some stakeholder engagement, clearly with our D-LAC, our E-LAC, the big thing with Acosta and Erin's working with them right now is student voice. How do we make, give students more of a seat at the table when you're looking at them in school-wide decisions?
I think what Judy's saying is absolutely true. I agree with that. However, I think the, the whole system, the whole way that we glean the information that we're so desiring has got to be different. You know, to even use the phrase have a seat at the table. I think, I'm not even sure that that's
Which table is it?
Yeah.
And I mean, honestly, I feel like there's always a, there's always an open seat at the table. I, I feel like we're pretty open. But I don't know if inviting someone to sit at the table is really where it's at. You see what I'm saying? I think the whole, the whole attempt to reach out and, and be a part of the community and gather that information isn't the way we've been doing it. I think if we're really going to make it different and becomes not show up at a board meeting or even a, a roundtable discussion, that's, I mean, that's a whole nother conversation to have. But I don't know if we're going about it the way we need to be going about it. If, if we're looking for certain voices, and I think we should be, I just don't think the old way of getting that information is really the way we should be doing it anymore. If we really want to mix it up.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any, so we clearly need a process and it might need to be a brand new process that we have yet to conceive of, which is fine. And I think, you know, like one of our preliminary conversations with Dr. Acosta and Curtis was around the, in some of the places where they've worked, they've created community committees on ethnic studies to inform the schools. So you have a committee that kind of guides the school's lens on equity, basically. Made up of students and parents and people in the community. Maybe it's something like that. I don't know. But I can definitely do some research and we can start picking their brains a little bit more, but moving in that direction. So.
I would rather take the time and do something like that and get the right voices because I think about those, you know, those, especially the, the sweet mothers that would come and speak that Judy's referring to, right?
Right.
I, I can't, I know how nervous they were. I could hear it in their voices. That was a big deal to come and stand in front of the board and make their, their plea or to share their story. That is, I don't think that's the forum for that to happen. And I'm not even so sure, you know, dropping in at a school in, in a formal meeting like that is even the roundtable. I almost think it's a little too formal. So anyway.
And we are making good headway with our ELACs. So we have more parents participating now in ELACs than we ever have in a formal way, which is really good and been a blessing.
Agreed.
I think we have the momentum pushing us in that direction. So I will work on a plan to bring to you for some mission vision work, but kind of as a precursor to that, it's how do we give, you know, how do we find more voice or how do we let those voices be heard more in our decision-making?
May I ask the question, we're, as opposed to inviting people to our table, let's seek, let's seek to be invited to their table.
Right.
I've sat in meetings and been the white guy in the, in the room. And it's a lot different meeting than, forget the board meeting, but we're all the white guys and white women. And there's a few Latinas, Latinos sitting in the room. And it's our meeting. I'm talking our meeting, the white guys meeting. We need to, we need to meet with our, our community where they are. And I, unfortunately, I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
Well, that's the how.
There you go, Chris.
You guys.
No, but I'm just saying, I think that would make a whole different, you know, going to somebody's house, and I'm making this up now, and sitting at their, at their dinner table, having this conversation with a group of neighbors, community members, parents or whatever. We're going to hear a lot more of what we hope to hear, which is, who knows? What we, we just want the freedom of, of, of all of our community to, to speak and, and not just our Latina community, our white community, our, you know, our wealthy community, our poor community, I mean, all the intersectionality of all of this stuff. But I think when we get back to racism and anti-racism, you know, we really have to look and see what we're doing. And I'm looking at the four of us, what are we doing to be anti-racist? And, you know, it's hard work. So, you know, step one.
Correct.
In the context of this discussion, what's happening with high school leadership? Is there such a thing right now with remote? Not to mention the marquee out in front of the high school looks horrible, but that's a different thing. It's like the letters are falling off. It says, congratulations graduates, but half the letters are that it needs to be taken out. Like is there leadership right now in a virtual?
I don't know the answer to that question, honestly. The, and the marquee is typically done by the leadership class.
That's why I thought of them.
Yeah. But I can definitely get back to you and see what's going on with it. It is, you have to remember it's not a class anymore. It's a club.
That's why.
It doesn't happen. So I'm not positive that anything's going on right. No, you know, it is because I know it's for president.
Yeah. Shelley Anderson is the club advisor and it's fairly active. It's, it's not huge. It's not like a class, but
I think we are, they're going to hold a virtual election and get kids elected because
Yay. I know they had Spirit, Spirit on Friday.
I do, I do have to, I just have to jump in that we all are under COVID restrictions. And so going into somebody's house and sitting around the dinner table is not a feasible thing. I don't even know if you can go to Oak Grove Apartments to a community meeting.
It all has to happen on Zoom.
It's feasible right now. So
Is right on.
But, but I do think that we can, and I do encourage all of you to listen to that podcast because at the end of the podcast, you hear about how they went about doing that.
And that podcast is Nice White Parents.
Nice White Parents, first episode.
Where do you find it?
New York Times.
Okay.
It's a New York Times podcast.
Yeah.
It's any, if people know how to do that, I know how to do it off of Donna's text message to me.
Donna, could you text me? Seriously, could you text me how to do it? Or forward it?
Chris, Bill is here, you know, is on the meeting. If you wanted
Oh, it is.
about leadership, I'll unmute him.
Yeah, sure. He can tell us about leadership. And then I think I've got enough, you know, guidance from you guys' direction to, to move forward. So.
There'll be more in the past, in the future.
Here he comes, I think.
Hey folks, can you hear me?
Hey Billy, yes.
Well.
Good evening. I just want to say quickly that yes, Shelley is our leadership advisor this year. We will be holding elections for officers. We did have a spirit day last week and we will be working with the students to be able to do events and celebrations as best as possible throughout the school year. We have a good handful of ninth graders, which is a very encouraging sign, have signed up to be part of our leadership club. And returning 10th, 11th and 12th graders. And so we can hopefully bring forward more information about officers and next events and things for the calendar in the days to come.
Great.
And mar, and marquee upgrades.
Yes. It just looks sad, right? With the letters. It looks, oh, anyway.
It is sad. Nobody's here, you know?
It is really sad, but maybe a little inspirational quote. I would have something up there, right? Cause An inspirational quote. Oh my gosh.
All right. So
You could put up that quote. So thank you, thank you. Put up that equity quote. An equity quote. There we go.
That from
Maybe just listen to Nice White Parents on the marquee and we'll get the whole community listening to it. And use that as a basis for conversation. It'd be fascinating.
It would.
Wouldn't it? Yeah. I'm telling you.
So speaking of equity, we have, we have a number of contracts and programs that we want to bring to you today. So is it okay if we proceed on to the high school?
Yes.
All right. So Erin, do you want to talk about ELD at Hillsburg High?
Yeah. And Karen, can you go ahead and pull up the over, the overarching PowerPoint on?
Yes. I'm sorry. I was so into that conversation. Oops.
No, that's okay.
Conversation that I don't have it quite ready, but it'll be up in just a minute.
Okay. So what we're, what we're going to go through here are one, two, three, four agenda items. All on the topic of English language development. As Superintendent Mannen Hubel mentioned, these are contracts, so they do need approval. We were to do this, I think originally back in August, and then we had to shift gears and so this is, this is coming to you much later than we would have liked, but such is life. That's kind of where, where we're at. Oh yeah. You can see prepared there for the August board meeting first and then slid and slid. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide.
Hmm. I thought I had changed that date.
That's okay. Kind of good, right? That's
Lets us know.
Yeah. So Hillsburg High, we have a new partnership this year with an organization called ELD achieve. And there's probably more in the backup documents. So if you all and others who are listening tonight, I encourage you to look in the board packet. There's lots of information. I just, I couldn't decide exactly what to give you. So I ended up giving you more than you probably need. If you're thirsty for more, the ELD achieve website is, got even more information on it. So if it piques your interest or you have insomnia or, I don't know. Love to read about English language development. There's plenty there. So a new partnership for us, this came out of a multi-month search to make sure that we found providers curriculum that was up to date, aligned with the ELD external evaluation that Dr. Chris Nichols performed for us. That it would meet the needs of our one high school ELD teacher that we have now. I was just reflecting with her that, you know, when I started six years ago, we had three ELD teachers at the high school. And mostly because our elementary teachers do such a great job of RFEpping our kids. Prior to them becoming long-term English language learners, we have far less need for designated English language development at the high school. But we do have a need. And so ELD achieve, a nationwide serving organization, but they are based here in California. So they're very familiar with the California state standards. Our teacher Roxanne McNally is going through a year-long virtual training. She's done her first two days and then there'll be touchpoints throughout the year. In normal times, this would have been an in-person training, but they've shifted it to everything online. And I did include just the like quick shot of the agenda. So you can kind of see what is included. We have new curriculum that arrived over the summer. So Roxanne had time over the summer to, to preview the curriculum and take a look at it. Happy with it. So it is one of the most affordable curriculums we've ever purchased, I've ever seen in my life. And part of it is just the mission of ELD achieve is basically to cover their copy costs and some basics. This is not a for-profit organization. We will, at some point this year, and as it says there, plan to expand and include support staff for integrated ELD. Given what's going on and all the new and all the changes, you know, I'm just going to be very honest with you that integrated ELD at the high school right now is not on, you know, it's not my top tickle file, nor do I think it is for Principal Halliday and Connie Marks, the assistant principal Connie Marks. But we will get to it. It's not going away, but it's just not top of mind right now. We started using Rosetta Stone a couple of years ago and some, you know, you may have used Rosetta Stone. There's an educational component and a product of Rosetta Stone that's made for use in educational setting and particularly for upper grade kids. So we still have that and really helps our newcomers in particular. So our level one and two kids practice their listening and speaking. So they have the fancy headphones and speaker that were, were sent home so they can hear and tape themselves and listen and interact with that listening and speaking element. So we have more licenses for our high school kids to use Rosetta Stone, really helping in the distance learning environment because they're just not getting the practice in the classroom with each other and with their teacher as much. And, you know, the last bullet there, we now have four sections of ELD. So we're spending, you know, another FTE allocation. Roxanne is now a .8 ELD teacher. So the kids are scheduled, are scheduled with, with, we don't have mixed groups. One of the big things Dr. Nichols pointed out, and we always try to do, is that we don't have more, you know, we don't have a level one sitting in a level four class, for example, or even a level one sitting in a level three class. So they're scheduled much, much better. So what we're asking you to approve tonight is this, this allocation that is for about $3,200 and that covers all of the new curriculum for both our bridging and our expanding. So bridging are the kids who are kind of right in the middle, level two, three. Expanding, this is new, newer language or level fours. That's what those of us old timers would know. And then also part of that approval is the, the training. Very, very affordable training, like I said, and Roxanne is, is doing the virtual training with a cohort of other teachers. And so it's kind of nice. She's meeting people from, from all over, mostly California, but other English language development teachers, which is kind of nice because you're, you know, she's a, she's a little bit of a lone soldier. She's only one at the high school who does her job. And so it's, I think it's been nice for her to, to meet and understand other contexts for English language development. So that's all I have to say about this particular agenda item for ELD achieve for the high school. Any questions or comments?
That sounds great.
Exciting. Thank you.
Erin, just a quick comment, list on the screen. If you hit that ELD achieve, what you have later in the slideshow, a lot, that, a lot of what you have, wait a minute, you have a lot of what is on that website. So for, if people are interested in learning more about ELD achieve, I went to the website and it looks a lot like what you have.
Yeah. I tried to call out some of the more, the documents I think would be most appreciated by the board and the public, but yeah.
I looked at it yesterday and you have it.
Great. Yeah. Awesome. So I'd like to ask for you to approve this expenditure.
Do I have any other questions or comments? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
I'm sorry. Judy seconded by Mike. Correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And then on to the next step in this. Erin?
Yeah. So we're going to just go through the grades here. So now we're going to talk about junior high and there's a contract proposal there with Dr. Kate Kinsella, who happens to also be a community member. What a gift to us. And her senior associate, who would be the one more kind of boots on the ground, Jennifer Finney Ellison. And again, in a, in a pretty broad search to find the right match for our needs, for what was called out in the ELD external evaluation, kind of brought us home. Brought us to Dr. Kate Kinsella and her, her associate Jennifer Finney Ellison. So we had a preliminary meeting with her back in the spring and then met in person over the summer socially distanced out in the, in the quad. Myself and Principal Miller to have a conversation. And really feel like this is a good fit. I've mentioned before that Principal Miller has a pretty deep background himself in English language development, being a curriculum director in UCAIA. That he's, you know, bilingual, bicultural himself. He's very proficient, but it is nice and we still need help. You know, it's one thing for staff people to hear it from your principal. It's another to hear it from an expert. So we desire to partner with Dr. Kinsella and Ms. Finney Ellison. I'll tell you, we had talked about them leading a full day in August of professional development. And we pulled back on that so we could focus our efforts. And we pulled back on that so we could focus our efforts on distance learning. So not only was the contract not approved by the board, it just didn't feel right to do a full day of ELD with the junior high staff, given the mountain we needed to climb to get better at distance learning. So we still, and what you'll see in the, the contract here is we had dates set, so the Unified Staff Professional Learning Day in tandem with Dr. Kinsella. That unified staff means junior high, not entire, not unified school district. So the unified staff of HGH. We did have dates set on this contract and I asked them to pull it off. We do feel strongly that it will be important for Dr. Kinsella and Ms. Finney Ellison to work in person with our teachers and that, you know, they are new to us. And that doing it through Zoom and doing it all through virtual is not going to necessarily bring us the, the ticket that we're looking for. So we're pausing for just a little bit here and they're kind of rejiggering to see what they can pull off virtually, what we might be able to do possibly in small groups, once we're allowed to reconvene staff in, in person, even in small groups.
So Erin, in the meanwhile, what's, like, what does that mean for classes happening right now today?
Yeah, so I, I think looking at the slide, bullet two there, a massive change in the way we have organized our students has already happened. So we have a brand-new eighth-grade English language arts teacher. He has the four sections of, of English language arts for eighth grade, and then his fifth section is the designated ELD class for eighth graders. He is a veteran educator. He comes to us with an ELD background. So we have, instead of leveling the kids in junior high, we have them cohorted by grade, so their English language arts teacher is also their ELD teacher. So just by scheduling and having a better mesh, so if you remember from the external evaluation, one of the big points was to mash English language arts and English language development better. So that's hard to do when you've got kids in all different classes and different levels and taught by different people. So just the scheduling of itself, new teacher, you know, he's still trying to figure us out. We're figuring him out. He does have a background. Seventh grade, again, I'm just going to be real honest here, TC Peterson's our seventh grade ELA teacher. She's on maternity leave. We have a long-term sub. Not super worth it, maybe I'm being too blunt to provide a whole lot of professional development to a long-term sub that's going to be with us through November.
Yes.
And then in sixth grade, we have the amazing Ms. Cynthia Guig, who is a teacher leader in this arena. She could probably do some of this professional development as a consultant if she chose. So she has all the sixth graders, and then Roxanne McNally is actually teaching the sixth grade integrated ELD class to keep her full-time. So she teaches Ms. McNally 80% at the high school, 20% at the junior high. She's teaching the sixth graders and is doing some work with Ms. Guig. So the, the scheduling change and, you know, just kind of leveraging the internal resources that we already have. The last bullet point is worth talking about and kind of what are we doing now? Now, Dr. Catlin Tucker, who earned her doctorate from Pepperdine over the last two years, has been working in our district for many years. It was requested by the high, pardon me, by the junior high teachers about a year and a half ago to get more time with her. They had a very, very successful series of sessions last year where they, as it says, differentiated and really took a hard look at student-centered pedagogy, using our technology in a more sophisticated way. And so they requested the LA department to continue that work with Dr. Tucker with the focus of how do they get better at meshing the ELD and ELA standards? So there is more differentiation and that we just don't do the same thing, because that's what was in my lesson plan. But who are my learners? What, where are they at? How do I use those ELD standards in order to differentiate for the different language needs of the kids? So it's a great question, and I'm happy you asked it because it is a little scary that we're moving slower. But I feel confident that the, the train is moving down the tracks. It's just not moving quite as quickly and robustly as we'd like.
Well, and it's, it is, the irony of this whole thing, of course, is the exacerbation of learning for the students who need it the most, right? Is like, this is, just exacerbates the problems, the distance and the, and whatever. And so it's just really hard to, you know, to just absorb that things are getting delayed that are some of the most important things we need to be doing. But it also is the reality, it just is. And so I, I appreciate, I thank you for going, taking that step back and giving us the context for this. So it sounds like we've got a really good foundation at the junior high now. And really what we're going to be doing with Dr. Kinsella is really going to build on that. It's not just like, we don't know what we're doing and we need her to come in and do it for us. We're, we're really building now.
Yeah, and, and Dr. Kinsella actually pointed that out. You know, in the conversations that we've had, which have been many over the last couple of months, and, you know, her time with Chris Miller. She, you know, she, she can pick and choose her clients, right? She doesn't need this work. And if you'll notice, and I want to give a shout out publicly, she, she normally would garner around $4,000 a day. And so she is giving us a gift of her time and her knowledge. You know, we, we will be paying rack rate for Ms. Finney Ellison, but to get Dr. Kinsella's expertise and continued guidance and just, you know, that I can ring her up, Chris can ring her up, we're on a text basis now with somebody of her. Her stature is pretty amazing, so I want to, I want to thank her publicly for the, the gratis work that she's doing for us and has committed to do and is outlined in the service proposal that you have in front of you.
Erin, can I ask a quick question back to bullet two? Our seventh grade substitute, is there some way that we can find a person on a very part-time basis that can offer support to this instructor?
Yeah, and he, he's getting quite a bit of support from his colleagues and his principal. So he, yeah, we, we, I think his cup filleth over. I don't think it's a lack of support that he's feeling right now. Yeah, yeah.
One more question is, we're doing some pretty different things at the junior high than the high school. The high school program's just not adaptable to the junior high sec, you know, is it not? I, I, I mean, you know, it's always nice when there's really good continuity and.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about a very different situation and population of kids. So most of our English language learners start with us as kindergartners. Roughly 80-plus percent of them will RFEPP by the time they hit fifth grade. We're talking about 50 or so kids at the junior high. The majority of them are at the level two and three, or pardon me, level three and four. We and Dr. Nichols believe deeply that these kids who are now English, long-term English language learners need the boost from both the ELA and the ELD. If we can better sandwich those two things together and get continuity going, will our RFEPP them.
Gotcha.
Whereas a high school student, we're now talking, they are, they, they are long-term English language learners. We're talking emergency room, right? We have not been able to unlock their door to the language and literacy that they need. So the ELD achieve, the systemic ELD achieve is very, not prescribed isn't the right word.
Not intensive.
It's intensive. That's a good word. That's a good word. It's much more intensive. It's, it's, this has not worked, right? It is time, like, it is emergency room time. We have to RFEPP these kids before they graduate from high school.
Gotcha. Okay. That totally makes sense. And then we still have this trickle of newcomers, but we have pathways for them too.
Right, and we only have three at the high school right now, and we have one at the junior high.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
So Erin, I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you paying attention to the outside evaluator on our ELD program and paying attention to all of that as you're designing this. And also, I love the fact that they're, that they want to work with Caitlin Tucker on different, differentiating within their classroom. Because that's what elementary teachers have to do all the time in their classroom. And, and I think it's a skill that will really serve the junior high well. And it will, it can permeate out into other subject areas. But, but learning that skill of differentiating right within your classroom, it's, it's a bit complicated, but it's a way of instruction that, that was very exciting to me to see that bullet.
It is, and they're, they're very excited. You should see the, the scope and sequence that they put together with, with Dr. Tucker and the writing prompts. And, I mean, I was like a kid in a candy shop when I saw the product that they put together over about, it was supposed to be just four days, but what, what they did is two days before COVID, in-person where she coached with them and then went into their classroom for a day. And then we did four half-days once we hit COVID. And the, the excitement, the work, the articulation that's happened in that department from just those four days worth of work is phenomenal. If I could get that much work done in four days and all this stuff we do, I'd be a happy, I'd be a happy CNI director. So, well, what, what you have in front of you, this is, this is hitting two agenda items. So we've been talking about the contract proposal with Dr. Kinsella and Ms. Finney Ellison. So there are two contracts in there as this first agenda item. And then agenda item E is the agreement with Dr. Tucker, also for the junior high. So we've got, we've got three contracts here. All of these have been budgeted. None of this is new money that we're like, oh, we had to figure out. So when we, we went through the budget cuts with you back in May and then brought forward what the budget for professional development would be out of our various, you know, professional development categoricals that we get, title two, title three. This is all money that has been budgeted, so this is not new dollars. I want to make, make sure that that's clear. So the, the first is asking for you to approve the proposal, the dual proposal here with Dr. Kinsella, because they come as a package, and Ms. Finney Ellison.
So that is one contract to Dr. Kinsella and Ms. Finney Ellison, right? That's one contract.
It's written as two, because Ms. Finney Ellison works as a, she is not an employee of Dr. Kinsella. She is a, she is a senior associate of Dr. Kinsella. So we would pay Ms. Finney Ellison directly, not, we would not pay Dr. Kinsella, who then pays Ms. Finney Ellison as an employee. She's an independent contractor.
So I'm, I'm still only seeing that contract and then, yes, somebody else? Is it just me?
Oh, I agree. I only see one.
So there's, there's the, I'm not sure what page.
And the next item, and then there's this one.
You've got the cover sheet, so if we're looking at the packet, we've got the cover sheet for Kinsella. It's a two-page cover.
Yep.
And then there's a, a single page there for $2,500 with Dr. Kinsella.
Gotcha.
That's one contract, right?
And then at the top, it says, I see there now, in the blue stripe, Jennifer Finney Ellison.
And then next, you see Jennifer Finney, uh, Finney Ellison, and that's for nine days of work.
That looked like a continuation of the first page. That was.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. So we have, you need two motions. No, it's one agenda item for both contracts, it appears.
Correct.
Okay.
Because they're a package, like, it wouldn't work for you guys to approve. Yeah.
So any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve eight-one D, which is the Kinsella-Finney Ellison combo contract?
I'll move that we approve both contracts.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Excellent, unanimous. Okay, and the second one, E, is the Catlin Tucker, which I think we've already talked about, but are there any other questions about that?
I don't have any questions. I would actually move to approve the Catlin Tucker contract.
And I'll second that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. This is really exciting, Erin. And now we're at elementary.
Yeah, next slide. This is our, this is our last one, and then we can get some dinner.
That's good.
Okay. So a, a little bit of a reminder here, we'll look at our slides for elementary, for the Hillsbury Elementary and Fitch Mountain campuses. We're talking about TK through five now. All elementary teachers participated in a virtual training on the ELD standards in May with our county office ELD coordinator, Yale coordinator. We had planned to maybe do this in August, but then once COVID hit, our teachers were like, we're ready, let's do it. So they had a, about a three-hour session by grade level with Jen Barrero from the county office. And, you know, again, reflecting back on what Dr. Nichols told us, is that we need to get better at using the guiding documents that the state has put in front of us. The ELD framework, the ELD standards, and that's really what that focus was, is the ELD standards. When they first come out, it first came out in 2012. When they first came out, we all paid attention to them, right? Guiding document, it's new, and, and we drift as we get into things. And so returned back to our, our standards document, made sure we know how to read them, what they say, and starting to get better at how does the work that we've been doing, whether it be project-based learning or adopting new ELA core curriculum, how, how do we use those things with what it says we have to do in the standards? The next bullet, we pulled off PBL Works. It was a three-day of virtual learning. I'm not sure if you have been able to touch base with any of the teachers that attended this. I'll say I was nervous, right? Three days, all day, and the agenda was packed from 8:30 to 3:00, she was working them. And I thought, oh my God, this is either going to be great or a disaster with this much learning happening over three days. It happened the week before school's, the official start date of our contract in, in early August. We had great representation. I'll say, you know, thanks to Eric McGuire and Jeff Franny for working with their staff and making sure that we picked dates that would work for the majority of people. And one of the big things that we hammered with our provider is that, you know, as Trustee Velazquez was saying earlier, we are a majority serving, the majority of our kids are bilingual kids. And we have to look through that lens. And so we can talk about project-based learning and how fun projects are and how engaging and wonderful. But if we don't have, like it says, the ELD scaffolds in the PBL, we're not correctly serving our kid. We're not helping every kid have the education that they deserve. So they did spend quite a bit of time, they had these three documents. If you click onto these, you're going to get into PBL Works. You got to give them your email. They're one of those institutions that everything's free, pretty much, but they want your email. So if you get on there and it says page not found, or, you know, you got to, you got to give them your email to download these documents. So that happened. Also, we did go forward, even though we know, knew we needed to stay focused on distance learning in our August professional development days, we did pull off Journeys and Benchmark Advance, which are core curriculum. These are the core curriculum that we purchased now four years ago. And we had them back to do some refresh, to sound, you know, we've got some new teachers. So our new teacher's got a, this is your core curriculum. And then a good couple of hours on the integrated and designated ELD modules that are part of our core curriculum. So all that's happened. Now moving down to that second-to-last bullet, as part of the work, we've been updating our scope and sequences and method mix for designated ELD. So everybody in K5 is a designated ELD teacher now, right? We don't have some teachers that are designated ELD and some that are not. All K5 teachers are designated ELD teachers. And so of the, you know, four fifth, four, fourth grade teachers, there's a scope and sequence that they'll all be using for designated ELD. We're working, we've got some great experts. And I don't know if I can let the cat out of the bag, Erica's here, so is Mr. Franny. But we're, we're harnessing our own teaching staff to help our newer staff. Then if they're new- if they're new to the profession, or if they're new to this, they may have been in Hillsburg for nearly a decade but haven't had the background and training that some of our other teachers have had and designated ELD. So we're leveraging our, our own staff and some very noteworthy of our own teachers who are going to be doing teachers' teaching teacher sessions. What you have here in your packet included that we'll ask for approval for is training and coaching from two current principals. So Tiffany Steele and Julie Rojo are two principals who are, are gonna provide five days of their time each, so a total of ten days of training. One of them will be focused on the K-two site, the other will be focused on our three-through-five site. And they will be providing designated ELD training for our, our teachers in addition to our own in-house folks. There isn't a contract there, the last one, we continue to receive assistance from Navigator Schools, who has a very similar population to ours. Like it says, leveraging the, the, the small group philosophy that they have helped us with and also using paraprofessionals to support differentiation. So how do you do high-quality, small-group work with paraprofessionals? And we've really looked to Navigator over the years and will continue. And this is just a, a gift of partnership, we're, you know, part of their inner circle now, so there's no cost to us currently for that. I, I do wanna say, the proposal that you have in front of us is really focused on linking, I can't say this enough, linking the ELD standards to the content standards that are taught in the classroom. And that it's not a separate, it's not a, okay, now, now we're gonna do this and boxing it all up, but trying to bring more synergy between language learning for bilingual students and language learning for monolingual students. And then connecting the ELD methods that we know work, right? We're a district, as our external evaluator said, that RFEPs more kids younger and more kids period than most other districts out there. So we know a lot of these ELD methods work. But we need to do a better job of linking them to our English language arts program. And so using our core adopted program to link the Verb Ten Study and Word House and some of these wonderful methods that we've learned over the last decade to our everyday teaching and learning with all of our kids. So I'm gonna stop talking and field any questions?
This is really exciting to see it all come together, Erin. That the English language learning woven into English language arts with project-based learning all together.
We're doing it slowly but surely.
I just wanna compliment Erin, you and the teachers. This has gotta be just a, a hard road to hoe, given the COVID situation, distance learning, et cetera. But I am, I am thrilled. As Donna and Judy have said, that you are, you and the, the teaching staff and our administrators are moving forward with this. And I also wanna point out, it's certainly gonna be great for ELD students, it's also gonna be great for English only students.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I feel sorry for English only students, they're monolingual.
Right.
Let's point that out at some point, but not now. But anyhow, just congratulations, keep up the good work, I know it's tough.
Yeah, and, and the, the thanks is rightly placed on our administrators and our teachers for just continuing the work here and staying focused on what we need to do and not getting drawn into the, the, you know, we're, they are busy, they are busy, they are busy, right? But it's not, they're not giving up on the road to hope, they're, they're hitting it hard.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would add, Erin, thank you for always looking for the best resources for our district. I think it's, it's remarkable, we're so fortunate. And to, to piggyback on what you said, the teachers and their desire and their interest and their energy behind it is, is very encouraging, so thank you.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Any other comments before we ask to approve the Steele Consulting Professional Development Contract Proposal?
Or do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in, any other questions, comments, I think we're good. All in favor? Aye. Excellent. I'm glad we got that all done, since we're all, you're, you, we, you like the way you, everyone is doing it already. So good to always get those contracts signed, thank you.
They're gonna be paid.
You know.
Yeah, I'm like, you have my word, I think I have a checkbook too, so.
That stuff, generally. All right. Anything else? There haven't been any comments, Karen, we're good? Okay, regularly scheduled board meeting is the sixteenth week from tomorrow. Chris has surgery tomorrow, we sent you.
Good luck. Good luck. Where are you going?
Uh, it's outpatient surgery center next to Sutter, so.
Good.
You could just camp out there for a few days if you get evacuated again. And move in with you in your room at Sutter.
Try not to go to the hospital, yeah.
Thank you, everybody, I'm really glad we were able to do this, we don't really have a lot of people attending. But whenever this recording gets posted, Karen, let me know, because it would be great if we could all share it and maybe get people out listening to it, because I think we had a really important discussion today about equity and the English language programs that I can't imagine, we, I know we have parents who would like to know about this.
So, so normally we don't record special board meetings and, but once we started talking, I pressed record because I realized it was important, so like, the first five or ten minutes wasn't recorded, but the majority of the meeting was.
Okay, yeah, because I saw that, that's when I saw it recording and I thought, you know, this is really.
Thought it was too important not to, so.
Okay, excellent, thank you, everybody. Nine live parents.
Nice white parents.
Nice white parents.
Yeah, you gotta listen to the whole thing, though, you gotta make it all the way through, because it takes some loops, it takes you on some loop.
It does. And it, honestly, the first four episodes are not very encouraging either. And you really have to get to that last episode to feel like, oh, okay, there's some ways to make this work.
The last one's my favorite episode, so you gotta.
So just go right to five?
No, you wouldn't understand it.
You need to do the buildup. Too many good stories and things in there, oh, really good stories. Okay, everybody have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.